This conference will now be recorded.
To that forum, I will call for the office of course after we do this question. Please stand in front. My question leads us to the time of the conversation. Do we call it? Please stand. Thank you. If you have one of these, please put it on silent. Pressing at the table this afternoon, Mr. Perez, our attorney, Supervisor Tinkle, Supervisor John, Supervisor Feinberg, District Manager Streetman, and, I'm sorry. Yes, yes. Say Feinberg.
I'm sorry. Larry, I'm sorry. And Christopher Feinberg is the town prior. And joining us on the either net is Supervisor Feinberg and Banks. Is that correct, Christopher?
Yes, sir. And we also have listening in Dean Saucier, Daniel Nelson, Tetra Tech, and Cecilia Haas.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, we may also want to announce and indicate that all the meetings that have been high birth meetings, Chris, whether or not Chris received any comments or communication back to email or call them for the topic of today's meeting?
No, we have not.
Thank you.
And we also have additional seating and monitor setup in back in case we have an overflow crowd or extra folks that we could bring them in one at a time for public opinion.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Well, Mr. District Manager, would you talk to us about people who have signed up for public comments?
We have two folks that have signed up to speak today and also in case anyone comes in for a chat, also ask Ms. Haas if she wants to speak, but we have three people. And this will start in order, Mr. Gepper, Pelican Preserve.
Bob Gepper, Pelican Reserve, and I'm here to convey a vote that the Pelican Reserve Advisory Committee took last week, or just earlier this week in a meeting relative to the methodology assessment. And as a community, we would like to have the board not implement this this calendar year because we still have some major concerns about the impact on commercial properties as well as the internal conversation. Understand the fundamental differences in the cost of Pelican Reserve golf versus the Gateway Greens. So we would like to have time to resolve those things. So if we look to prove it this year, as Mr. Banks had suggested last week, but not implement till next year, we could support that.
Thank you.
And that was in response to the fact that only eight people had commented one way or the other prior, you know, we're 2,500 voices more or less. So that's where we wanted to just put it over there.
Please stay right there for a moment. Any supervisor have questions for Mr. Gepper? Mr. Feinberg, do you have a question for Mr. Gepper?
I do not.
Uh, Mr. Banks?
But what do you, what are the efforts that you think you need to take in order to either further educate the residents or better understand the methodology increase and impacts for Pelican? Do you feel like you understand it and it's just a matter of socializing it?
Or do you feel like? Rather decent understanding in everything except why our golf cart, golf course costs have so been disproportionately higher. So we want to make sure we can understand that. And if we change that, that time to see what the impact will be on the balance of the community. The second major factor has to do with the COVID and its negative impact on all businesses in our country. We're having a tough time sustaining the few businesses that we have, and they're going to be very adversely affected by what we're implementing here significantly so. And this just isn't the year to do that. The need remains. We support the need. We need to have a better understanding of certain parts of the assessment.
Thank you.
Mr. Banks, is that the end of your questioning?
I am good. Thank you, Bill.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you, Gepper. Mr. Manager, please introduce our next speaker.
Sure. Second one is John Tremontozzi.
Very good.
Close enough. Thank you.
Have you called off alphabet before? My name is John Tremontozzi. I'm, I live at Magnolia Lakes.
Would you spell your last name?
Certainly. T R A M O N T O Z I. First in the class to learn my alphabet. I have got two questions. During the lake restoration, my land was a little disturbed and it created a pitch towards the middle of the lawn, which really is causing puddling on the property, which never really occurred before. There've been several different people in, at the property, some from CCD, from, some from the CDD. And they all agree that there's a pitch. This is really kind of located where the drain was, and there was a little more work done around the drain than the rest of the lawn. And I believe that the contractor was hired, there was a contractor, obviously, who was hired by the CDD. And she was on the property and she also walked into the property and says, oh my goodness, this has to be fixed. So, and she, she gave me a fix. She said, what we're gonna, what we're gonna do is we're gonna come, we're gonna have to put some loom down to, to put the proper pitch towards the, the lake. And that will eliminate this, the water buildup. I told her that what I was gonna do, which when the restoration was taking place, they put in drain boxes. I told her what I was gonna do is I was gonna hire and have people put in the drain pipe. And this particular side of the house, I did it on both sides of the house, but this particular side of the house that I'm talking about, the drains come down, I pick them up into the pipe and the pipe runs, catches the drain box. Which again, we had to move a little down into the bank so that the, the water would, would rush out. I did send letters to the CDD, but I never got a response. But I did talk to a gentleman, Taylor Wainwright, and he came out, looked at it and gave me the permission to move those particular two boxes. I told her I was gonna do all this stuff and she asked if I could do it prior, she was gonna do this thing in like three weeks. She said, can you put these drain pipes, you're gonna do it, you do it prior to me coming home doing this, which I did. And it's all, it's, it is complete, even with the drain pipes, they still have a little bit of water. We still have this water buildup. So the first, the question really is, is there any, is there any time, timeframe when this may occur? But that was my, my first question.
And I said another contractor's coming out to do some warranty repairs and a few other items. They were waiting until after they did those littoral plantings, which they're doing this year. So I'll, I'll check into it, see where he's gonna get back. But if you'd like to, I'll pick your phone number, your email and all that, you know, as soon as he's gonna be there.
Perfect. And, and the last question is real quick. There was a, there was a, and they've always been there, but they haven't been this noisy. We put in a green, it's a green box. It must be a pump that reg, that circulates some of the water. This thing's, it's really pretty noisy to the point where at night it's, thank you. At night, it, you know, it's, when you're, when you're listening, like trying to watch TV, you can hear it. You can't sit out in the night. It's.
You're talking about the area?
Yeah, it must be one of the, it's the green box. I, I know that it's only supposed to be there for a year or so, but it's just that we can kind of dim the noise a little bit if, if possible.
That might, that might be the controller for that nano bubbler that they put.
Yes.
I was gonna say, absolutely. There's two different fields out there.
Yes, and I'll, I'll check into that because probably I have the electrician or looking at people in that little insulator cabinet or a fake rock over it or something like that.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you, sir. Yeah. Ask you a couple of questions. You're at the overflow for the all of our needs of community when we drop it down a foot. Yes, sir. Okay. Yes, I'm, I want to make sure I understand this. If I'm in your linnai looking to north, they had a fence, which was the, essentially the top of the easement?
Yes. Yes. The two pieces of.
It was like, it was the fence that keeps people from doing in and contractor from doing out. It demarked the area where they were supposed to do construction. My question is, is this low spot on the lake side of that fence or on your side of the fence? Is this on your side of the fence that you worked at?
It's fine. We built up this on the lake side of the fence, where the fence was, on the lake side of the fence. And, and in fact, they put that drain box, the green drain box, it was really elevated. So when you, when you look at the land, it's.
So what you're saying is a slope, a, a natural slope that was there was removed by the construction.
It was built and built out by the construction. So it's more of a slope.
Mr. Feinberg, you have any questions?
I do not.
I do not.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we have a third.
Yes, Joe McCulca. And we do have a fourth also.
Good afternoon. Joe McCulca from Stony Brook at Gateway and Chairman of the Stony Brook Advisory Committee. And I'll start off with number one, which is, our committee is not in favor with the current proposal as we read it for altering the method of assessment that was to be for this year, but I guess is going to get kicked back to next year, that decision. I do not buy into the premise that a size of a house is necessarily correlates to the number of trips that are made from that house. I think that's faulty data and it's gonna give you a skew. And I could think of the first four houses on my street that are decent sized houses and all of them either have one or two adults living in it with no children. And I know, speaking for myself, there are days I don't even leave the community, especially with all that's been going on. But the number of trips per day, I do not buy that number and I don't think it's fair. If you base our, our not abhorrent taxes on those trips, I think that's a skew.
Where did you get that information? That, that is not correct.
It is not correct. I thought it was based on number of trips. I'm sorry.
No, no, not that part, size of house. We only have two classifications. We have multifamily and single family.
Okay. Well, the premise I thought was that they broke it down that way because the size of the house had a difference.
So it's nothing to do with.
It's condo versus.
Single homes of family versus single family. Size of house, nothing to do with this one.
Multiple family. Well, then I still don't understand how one versus the other determines the number of trips. I really don't.
This all comes back from a study that is recognized as the general way of doing this work.
I'm aware of that.
It, it suggests that the number of trips generated by a single family home is whatever the number was, 9.72, 9.52, and the number that come from a multiple family is so many. You could get into and you could hit this thing from oblivion. If you want to make it perfect, every house has to be, or exactly what our assessment, which, which is absurd.
No, I agree. No.
But it's, but it's somebody misled you.
Okay, I misunderstood it possibly, but I will say this, I don't think it's that hard to get statistics for number of registered cars per address either, which probably would better represent how many trips are actually being made from that address. Just throwing a example, example out.
I understand, but keep in mind, but I don't have a problem with that. The only issue is, is we take it there, then that's what it is, how many kids do you have? And then down the line we go. Please let, please let, it's not, it's just not advantageous and it certainly isn't prospectively to do a assessment of that.
Okay. Well, I, we're just gonna have to agree to disagree on that particular point because I think that there are assumptions there that do not hold up. But in any case, that's not all I know here about. I understand it's gonna be taken care of, but I do want to make a point here that we had some attorney's fees that were charged to our OO4 budget that were not requested for any legal services from Mr. Pierce and that we feel strongly that if a, a board member puts a request, a board supervisor to the Mr. Pierce for service, that if, just because it's about a specific community, that community that has a fund should not be charged for that. We have our own attorney. In fact, if we have been asked, all the data that I believe Attorney Pierce had supplied, we already had, he had supplied to this, us, that to us pretty much previously. Am I wrong about that?
I have a copy of the bill.
Okay. Well, the bill, there's a couple of bills here.
Attorney General's request, that was the board direction guidance to do the trade bill.
Okay. And that came from the board of supervisors, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Couple of other things I understand that will also be taken care of that had to do with charges for the landscaping and for a few other things that were paid that the committee didn't even know about. And we're looking into that. One is concerning ADT that went on for many, many years. And there was another one for landscaping that was done at one of the lift stations. The issue is, should the OO4 budget be paying for that at that lift station? It had to do with irrigation that had to be altered because of a pad that was installed to be able to service that lift station. And that's about it that I have really, because everything else looks like it's gonna fall in place.
I, I would have a question about the ladder.
Which one?
The pump station.
Why is that?
Me, any of the costs associated to that would be in the enterprise fund. I, I would not, because I know in my community where I've got not eight or nine pump stations, I would not expect to see any type of landscaping on that. For commoditation associated to implement pump station.
Correct.
The legal fee, that's, that's a different fee.
Well, we, we've been there before.
I, well, my issue was, I was getting ready to say this, is I, I remember the discussion to authorize our attorney to do the work and I certainly endorse that. I don't know that we had a discussion of how it was to be paid.
Well, I don't think there should be an assumption that, you know, OO4 budget from Stony Brook should be paid. We pay into the OO1 fund just like you do.
And that's a simple matter. The board wants the direct management to pay the general fund that could be, come out of my general statement. Let's see if the manager has a comment.
Well, on the legal bill, I can, you know, commend that with Tony, that's not an issue. We had a brief discussion about the charge for the landscaping and the utilities, but as part of rebuilding that master station, what it was with the existing irrigation controller, which is under the purview of their committee, was in the way of our construction and also sitting within our utility easement. So similar to a road relocation. We had to, we had to have, they moved that controller out of the way and out of our easement because where that controller was, was within the fence area.
This was a controller for the irrigation along the.
Yes, sir.
Which would not have been affected if it hadn't been for the pad to be able to service the, the lift station. And I might add, that lift station just doesn't service Stony Brook. It also services the villages across the street. That actually is the mastery facility, I believe, that handles.
It's just on the main pump station.
Yes.
Everything is right before the next.
Yeah.
But it's, it's the irrigation controller that was within the original fence. It was piping and pump work we did inside there that we had to move it outside of the existing easement and had nothing to do with the driveway. It was literally inside that fence within our easement. So that's, that's why it was built not to the enterprise fund.
Well, I do have to admit that is something that we certainly had nothing to do with the installation or location of that from day one. That's probably been there, was accepted by Gateway's being there. I mean, we hate the location of that lift station. We've talked about it in the past. Cost was prohibitive to move it somewhere else. It's, it's just a terrible location. And there has been a lot of problems with that lift station in the past with over and whatnot and contamination. And that's why it needs to be serviced on a regular basis. If it's normal, it wouldn't have been before. Anybody else?
Thank you. Are you ready for any questions?
Yeah, sure am.
Actually, I've already talked to Joe already. We did it before, you know, so I have all my answers. Thank you.
Think we have anything else? Mrs. Feinberg, any questions for?
Not at this time.
Thanks.
No, none for me.
Thank you.
Can we have one more speaker, Billy Jean Comley, Devonshire Lakes, and she wants to address Pond 92.
Hi. We have that. They, they did our Pond 92, uh, two years ago. Did a phenomenal job, looked marvelous. The first year, the water declined, went down, and it was graded down right into the water, the rocks, as it should be. This year, we now have an embankment. So now our, our rocks are here, stops. Now we have erosion by all the rocks. So it almost looks like a bulkhead. And that's behind most of the property on that side, which faces the preserve, which is the south side.
This is Pinewood, like, Pinewood, like.
Devonshire.
Oh, Devonshire.
Just.
Through the back end of Devonshire.
Yeah. No, on the side. When you first come in, toward the preserve, which is the south side. So as soon as you come into Devonshire, this house is there, there's the preserve. Those are the houses I'm talking about, the whole strip.
Okay. When you first come in, you have the community center.
Right.
And then you start houses.
Right.
And then it goes all the way back, then it only gets the.
Okay.
Is it along the houses?
All the houses in the back. Yeah, yeah. It just, it looks like a, you know, a bulkhead and, and it's a rolling.
Well, what it is, is the water level dropped below the control elevation to the extent of the rocks. And now you see the.
But the first year, we, we saw the rocks gradually go into the water when the level was low. This is the second year and clearly there's quite a difference. Now it stops here and.
Is the slope, let's, let's.
There's no slope.
There's some engineering terms here. The critical slope relative to the county and South Florida Management District is from the control elevation down to those rocks. That's the one that we have to maintain somewhere that they would forward one. Once it gets past those rocks that were placed, which were supposed to be facing, so it's like, anything else, there is no requirement for the slope. In fact, it's supposed to drop off, I believe, to one and go down to 20 foot depth. So if, if the, if the problem you're talking about, or the erosion you're describing, yes, erosion, is below those big riprap rocks, then really.
Well, you.
We didn't do anything in that area.
I, I would suggest someone come and look at it. I've written twice and got no response, so that's why I ran down here. And I, there was more rocks out there than there, you know, it's like halfway up.
Sure. We'll go check it out. It's, it's drought and low water levels, but I'd be glad to go.
Beat the rains.
Yeah, it's rising up now.
They had a lot of rain the last week. Is it still?
Oh, it's still drought.
It's still about eight inches in our house.
Yeah, it's still drought. So it's halfway to where it used to be, is a drought.
Thank you very much. I liked the first part of your presentation and anytime you want to come and talk about that again, you're very welcome.
And just one other question while I'm here. Any input into the development that's gonna be put in by the bank? That, that apartment complex?
We haven't received with the, on the corner of Gateway and Griffin Drive, the proposed 221 unit. Yes, sir. We haven't received a development application for it yet.
I think they just made one to the water district. K R P E L O N, you just made that. Keep it on top of that.
As I talked to the engineer, he's not been authorized to start anywhere. He has not been authorized to do any work.
And we heard rumor that there's supposed to be a HUD application for funding. They're from Miami and that's what they did on the development over there. They had to go through HUD to get money to build it. And if that occurs here, then because, you know, section 108 or whatever, that's bull. You want that here. That's all I'm saying.
Can you, can you wait for a moment, Larry, just a quick?
May I just have your address? Oh, 12724. Devonshire Lakes, San. Thank you very much.
And typically they'll do that because they'll have a, a few units in the building that are rent controlled.
Well, I'm, I'm just afraid it's gonna look like the HUD building on Victoria, you know, down there. And we don't want that here in Gateway now. It's approved, you know, I live next to it, but everybody has, have a ramifications of the HUD. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And that is all our speakers, unless anyone on the lines has something to say. Yeah, but Cecilia Haas online.
Nothing to say. Nothing for me. Thank you.
Chairman, if I may, just briefly, a lot of the speakers that I'm looking and that, K O, the lawn is home, Gateway 21, they submitted this out on board on June 8th. If you want to track, that's where you can, did they copy us?
I have not, I have the permit application. We, they sent some preliminary information over to us about some things they wanted to do and so they addressed it in the permit, but we have not received the copy. I'll send them a follow-up note. We, we work with the engineer.
Okay. How about free A, Mr. Attorney? You have. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to continue the public hearing. On the 2020 October 17th, that's theology, day 21st and June 4th. They have a motion to open the public hearing. So the man, the second, the blue, the seconded, all the things, may I? I. Vote. Motion to open the public hearing. And, and, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if we recorded the votes of Mr. Feinberg or Mr. Banks for that motion. I apologize for it. Mrs. Feinberg and Mr. Banks, you vote aye in favor of that motion as I heard?
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are you going to introduce an additional evidence or, or speakers at this time? Or are we going to go straight to asking for testimony from, from the audience?
I'd like to ask Russ Wire, consultant, he can step up for just a moment. And he had a couple of comments, I think we talked about some maybe confusion if somebody was looking at the assessment or the level of the assessment, and it's very minor, but I'd like to clear it up for the record.
Mr. Chairman, also, I think for those who are in attendance who are watching, if they've had an opportunity hopefully to review the, I'll call it supplemental comparison that was discussed at last week's board meeting, that Mr. Wire and Mr. Bloom worked on. It's called new methodology and, you know, clear apply new methodology to post 2021 budget versus applying the current methodology to 2021 budget. That's in the meeting. We're hoping you can.
Yes. For the record, Russ Wire, your assessment methodology consultant. There were a couple of tables that went out to you in court in particular, but it was also posted on the website on Tuesday, and then we had another one come out this morning, which gave you the comparison of the assessment. They are, they are accurate, but there's one piece that is actually missing, and that is if you decide not to adopt new methodology for this year, what is the assessment going to be with the lake assessment, the lake bank assessment? And that total will be $698. So essentially what I wanted to clear up, what you see under the new methodology, under that table, it shows that there's a 19.8% increase if you adopt new methodology. The reality is the new assess, the new methodology. The reality is, the new assess, the new methodology will only be increasing that by 9%, your budget increases, increasing that by 10%. So I wanted to make sure you understand, it's not the new methodology that's doing that increase, is that correct?
Yes, it is, and, and we discussed that, and basically, ballpark, it was, uh, the budget increase is about $5 a month or $60, and the assessment would increase it for a single family about $5 a month or $60.
But it's very close, I just wanted to make sure that that is understood, that I don't want anybody to, to determine that the methodology is really blowing it out of the water, and it's not. You have, it's, it's a combination of items. And really, that's the only, only item that I need to bring up.
Mr. Russ, can you help me here, I've looked at this.
Yes.
The new methodology that was just handed to the president this morning, um, on the, on the, on the single-family residential line, like, G L 1001, it's 672, 53. And, wow, what do we add to that 672 to get to the 754?
You're adding the $81.58 for the lake bank assessment.
$81.58. Russ, is your mic down?
Yes.
Oh, is?
Yeah, can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
We, we can hear you fine over the phone, Russ.
I'm sorry?
We can hear you fine.
Okay, great, thanks.
$81.58.
Correct.
Alright. So, the, the inquiry that you just described, uh, is, um, based mostly on the changes in the budgeting for fiscal 21, and not the exception methodology.
No, it's a, it's 50/50, basically, it's 50/50, so 50% of the increase is based on the budget change, the increase, and 50% is based on the new methodology, particularly for single family.
Yeah, it increased to about $56 a month.
Right. I'm sorry, $56 a year.
$6 a month.
$6, a little less than $6 a month. Of which, that, three of its, the assessment, three of its, the budget.
Did you do anything else to 21 stop, that I talked about before, we've got extra questions?
Nope, that was, I just wanted to make sure, clarify, now, is there anything else, what we brought before?
Flaherty, do you have questions?
Well, I'm just looking at this also, okay, and it seems that the multifamily house has gone down a real lot, and this one.
That's, well, there's two parts to the methodology that's driving that part, the one part is the, the trip generation, of course, and the other part is the water management. Understanding, it, it's counterintuitive, and we've explained this before, but a multifamily parcel, because it has quite a bit of impervious surface. However, you have a number of units that are on top of each other, so you're actually spreading it among more units, and that's why on the water management, on a per unit basis, it's not that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The only thing that I, I would suggest, and give it a shot, college try one more time, is to, letting to Mr. Gethard, the differentiation between the methodology in Gateway, which results in the golf course having a number, and the methodology in Pelican, that creates a different number, and it is a different spread, but there are things to look at. In Gateway, our average was what, 672, in Pelican, the number was well above 900.
Correct.
So, that number, that 600, impacts Gateway, the 900 impacts Pelican. So that additional cost or differentiation of about 50% is about the reason they're off that amount, not exactly, but close.
Yeah, and, and I need to clarify that, because remember, we're not using the EAU anymore.
That's correct.
Over there, so consequently, their, their budget is driven by the number of units, first of all, because they have less units. So their, the, the budget is being spread among less units, first of all. And, and second of all, the budget amounts are different, so that drives a different calculation, so that's why the golf course at this time, and I would have to say to you, really go through the details, so you understand how that number came about. You, you think intuitively, it would be proportional, but there are two separate ways that they're being measured, so that's, that's why we need, I consider it to be...
I understand that, I don't... I'm waiting for you there. Yes. Mr. Feinberg, you have questions?
I don't have any, at this time.
Mr. Banks, questions please?
No questions at this time.
Well, are there any members of the audience who want to make a presentation to the board regarding the assessment methodology? I didn't put in the talk, I just wanted to reference, thanks.
Warren Davies, Stony Brook, representing myself, uh, I think I gave a total agreement with Mr. Gethard, his presentation on delaying it for a year because of different reasons, he, he presented. Also, last week, I made mention of, of the tavern over here, which is actually R and R trade, and the escalation they had in their tax, and it's fine, it's listed to R and R, but there's about 10 businesses in that strip. And most of them were closed during the last three months, so they have not been making any money, so I think that's another thing to consider when we start looking at when we're going to start this. Last point is, I agree with Mr. Tinkle, I know it's unusual, but I agree with him, and he said that last week, there was only four or five people here to make mention of this, and I think one of the reasons for that is people knew the asset, or the assessment methodology was going on, but nobody saw any good raw figures. And the figures just kind of come out between last week and today, and in looking at them, you know, I see a, a split increase just in Stony Brook. Uh, by the time you add in all the different things, and of course, by the time we add in our 04 account, it brings it up to over $1,300 per, per unit. Uh, so I, I would, again, hope that with the, uh, closeness of the tax season starting November 1st, uh, that be considered to put off for another year, or another tax season to, uh, to start this new, new system.
Thank you, Mr. Feinberg.
Uh, hey, Bill, one, one question for clarification, and, and whether it's Stephen or Russ, whoever wants to jump in on this. Um, but these commercial properties, like, let's say, like where the tavern is, um, they, they lease those spaces, right? So wouldn't, uh, wouldn't this impact the owner of the property?
That's exactly right, it's owned by the guy that owns the tavern, uh, and they, the calculations that Russ did was based upon the individual trip generations of each of those individual types of stores that made up that, I think there's like 10 or 12 storefronts there, so each one of those different. The guy that owns that, he can eat that cost, or he can distribute it equally by the square footage, or he can distribute that based upon versus proportion of the numbers. He can do whatever he wants to do, yeah, and, and that's my point, is that he's going to distribute that cost throughout all those other businesses, and by doing that, that's going to impact those, those. I know the, the barbershop was closed for almost three months, uh, the couple other, the, uh, pet store, or the, uh, the veterinarian there, he was, they were shut down pretty much, they had to go, you couldn't get into the building, so they were restricting what they were doing. Everybody had some restrictions, and, and were losing money during that time, so I think to come now, uh, at this late date, to put additional funds or additional tax burden on people, I think that is kind of unfair, uh, at, at this point in time.
But, and again, point, point of clarity here is, it's, it's the owner of the property, not the leasees that are impacted directly.
But, that's true, but where's the owner of the property going to get the money to pay that bill?
Well...
He's gonna, he's gonna raise all their rents, is what he's gonna do, so that's good business, I would, if I had to pay that much money, I would distribute it amongst those people too.
Right, but then, Warren, if we get to that level of detail, then we have to start looking at, uh, the leasing amount per square footage, is that at market value, is he overcharging? I mean, that, that, that's a slippery slope, so I understand what you're saying here, but, um, uh, I guess my, my point is that the impact is to the owner of the property, uh, but there should be consideration, you know, regardless, just due to the environment, so I understand what you're saying, I just want to make sure it's clear that it's not, we're not directly impacting those individuals that leased their property.
Okay. Okay?
You don't really believe it, do you?
Thank you. I did not want to say that.
You don't really believe it, you, you're a he's the property, it's good to be able to help. I'll do it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
There was a comment, I couldn't hear it.
Any other, uh, folks you want to address for? Here ain't none, I want to pay an emotional close to the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor of, uh, closing the public hearing, please say aye.
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 Five, five zero. Alright, now we have the really interesting part. And that is to work on resolution 2020-11, which you will find on your agenda on page 96. The committee of supervisors approving the 2020 operations maintenance assessment methodology report created by Real State Econometric Inc., dated April 6, 2020, revised May 7, 2020, to be utilized by the board in adopting the district fiscal 21 budget and the levy and imposing of operations and maintenance special assessments on lands within the boundaries of the district providing for several physical conflicts in the state.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, I make a motion that we approve resolution 2020-11.
There is a motion to approve this resolution, if for a second.
A second.
I'm sorry?
A second.
So, Mr. Banks? I think we lost, I lost you.
Yes.
And I guess for...
Reserve, Banks, please, that, that, yes, please, go ahead, Mr. Feinberg.
What I'd just like for clarification, so that everybody understands exactly what we're voting on, Tony, can you just describe what this resolution actually is all, why we're going to vote on this?
Yeah, what it does, it, Russ Wire, R E E I, Real State Econometric Inc., has prepared the, initially a draft, they did 6020 revised, 7020, of proposed revised assessment, assessment methodology for the operations and maintenance special assessments of the district. And the consideration, the resolution under consideration is to approve utilizing that methodology outlined in the report, that's referenced in the resolution for purposes by the board adopting, when it ultimately comes to the adoption of the 20, this year, 2020, 21 budget, and the levying of assessments at that time. That would be at your budget hearing, I think it's next resolution, we have an agenda package to set the budget hearing, uh, for adopting the budget for August 20th, I think, of 2020. And if that, this would be, uh, so that when the budget is published, set to the county and set to the 64 fires, for true budget purposes, most in the public hearing, if the board adopts this resolution, the assessment methodology utilized here will be the assessment methodology that will be used for the board's consideration, and the notice to the public, or individual notices, and by map notice in the newspaper, because we are changing, on an increase in some respects, but changing the way in which the assessments are calculated. So, people still have an opportunity to object to the assessments on individual properties at the budget hearing, but this is basically adopting it, approving this report for purposes of applying the methodology when the board considers the budget. And, and levying assessments, I'm sorry, this does not levy the assessment.
Correct, I, I think we need an asterisk on there, because I understand, as we have in the past, we have agreed that the acceptance of this budget, and whatever methodology we end up with, creates a number which will be the highest, that it could be, at a later point, we could lower it, but we can't go above.
That's correct, but this is not, this is not to adopt any budget.
No, 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 what I'm getting to is that if we approve this resolution methodology, it sets the methodology on which those calculations are made, but those calculations result in a number that we're going to talk about a little bit later, that as I understand it, can't, oh...
Yeah, the dollar number per, you can't, also, you cannot modify this methodology, you don't have...
No, no, I can't do that.
Before, once we, if you're saying, if the board today agrees to approve this methodology for purposes of documenting the assessments when they approve the budget in August 20th, it's too far down the route to try to change it again later on, it's more difficult, because then you have, you're not just changing the dollars, you're changing the approach. But the board always, right, this is a high water mark as far as the actual dollars per unit.
I, and, I think that, yeah, it's the high water mark line. Russ, any other, the other one is too, is, is I, I think you saw with what Russ and Steve were able to do on this, uh, they've got this down to where it's essentially a formula. Uh, if we switch, uh, a number today on the budget, they go back and punch, and these numbers are going to go up or down, pennies, dollars, whatever, but we've got a down path, unlike that old system, which was just mountains, I forget what it was, the attachments was like 180 pages of calculations under the old methodology. That's a little more different, a little bit more stressful, and change.
But no, that lengthy attachment will still be part of the ultimate budget document, because that's the assessment, and that's every part of it.
Yeah, the length, it's the map, the map that's got to go in, they have to, 100 pages, maybe. Still 100 pages, yeah.
Let's see if other supervisors have opinions regarding this, uh, motion, and, uh, Mrs. Feinberg, do you have comments that you wish to make regarding this resolution 2020-11?
No, I, I just wanted, for all the people that were listening, or those there in the audience, to understand that this, we have to decide what methodology we're going to use before we pass the budget, which is the second part of this meeting. So this, if we vote, if this gets approved, we're using the new methodology, if it doesn't, we're using the old methodology.
It's a simple statement, just trying to... Thank you, uh, Mr. Banks?
Yeah, and I would just simply say that, um, this is probably one of the few remaining items that, that we have from an operational perspective, uh, that we need to address. I think the board and staff have done a great job over the last couple of years, uh, in, uh, looking at policy improvements, process, uh, operational, uh, and to me, this is one of the, you know, this is one of the, the last remaining items that we need to tackle, and, uh, and I'm real, I'm very sensitive to the current environment that we're in. However, I'm in favor of passing this resolution, uh, and putting this into play, simply because I think that we need to take action on it, and we don't know what the future holds, uh, so delaying it another year, um, I, I think just kind of defeats our, our purpose of continuous improvement. I mean, government and, and business does continue after run, I do think there are going to be ways in our final budgeting, uh, to look at opportunities to maybe offset the, the, the 9% increase, uh, that is associated with the methodology. So, that's, that's my position, and, uh, that's my final comment on that.
Flaherty?
No, I'm gonna...
Mr. Flaherty has no comments, I have to put her comments...
I have to put her comments, I believe we're really, really just ready to vote on this.
Phil, I would like to make one last comment, just because um looking at this and knowing that we're going to do a nineteen percent increase and raise everybody's assessment, if nothing changes by a hundred and twenty dollars, I think that, I think the community that is going to wake up and they are going to be very unhappy. I just don't think this will pass in the night quietly.
I'm gonna call for the vote on this resolution, I'm gonna call individually, there'll be no question about who voted and how. It's the people, you're number one on the list. Spimer?
Aye. With reservations.
Mr. Banks, will you vote please?
Aye.
Flaherty?
No.
Guys, no. So the motion, uh it's passed, we, so we don't have to worry about, worrying about a substitute motion, we're in that business and we can go then directly to discussion of the fiscal twenty one budget that begins on page one hundred and two here. Mr. District Manager, do you wish to uh tell us about the adjustment that you made in the decision number three, I believe, which is version, version number three, where you think changes.
Originally, we rolled the budget out with approximately two point nine million dollars increases, which reflected some significant capital costs in all areas now across the board. And some of those, of course, were very obvious. We asked for five hundred thousand dollars to redo one of the soccer fields, and that was really looking at the age of the field and like a golf course has to replace the fairway and greens, so the fields are getting to that point in time. We also looked at some additional work in stormwater and repairs and paving and sidewalks and roadways and really looked at starting the first year of a five-year plan for replacement rehabilitation of that critical infrastructure. And that also included streetlights, due to the budget concerns and those levels. We cut approximately two point seven million dollars out of that and just left funding in the critical areas and shifted some money that was in the budget under other categories to what we consider critical areas. And what we ended up with was an overall increase of approximately two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, um which equates to about five dollars a month or sixty dollars per year overall increase in the budget. The other portion of the increase, of course, about five dollars a month, sixty dollars a year comes from, to a single family, comes from that methodology. And there was an increase of a few dollars per year on the debt service for the lakes that go up. Um that's the number of lakes that we have under construction increase. So from the general fund side, about two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars or five dollars a month, and that's where you are right now. And I'll say that we, that is the high water mark of the budget. Uh we do have July and a couple of meetings in July that can look at other areas to trim, to try to offset some of that impact from the methodology. It will impact programs, it will impact staffing, but we can get down to fine tuning and we did a lot of cutting on that first round. And there's probably some areas we can, but it'll become more obvious. And bottom line, our mission from my standpoint, the staff standpoint, is to preserve property values and to minimize exposure um to the district and the residents. So when we go in and pave sidewalks and paths, it's not totally for aesthetics, we don't want to see people get hurt. And we certainly don't want to see the district on the other end of any litigation or a slip and fall. With the stormwater, the community spoke in loud and clear after Hurricane Irma, and we've made a considerable amount of improvements and shifted money around this year, including working on the flowway on the west side of I seventy five and also working on the conveniences and flowways that handle the north half of Pelican Preserve and the drainage re, leaving that area. And also the flowways leaking Stony Brook and Hidden Links. And we've been spending a considerable amount of time recently cleaning out and excavating drains along Griffin Boulevard um and gateway and making sure that those systems are operating. So we can, so look, as Mr. Banks said, they're doing some further cuts to reducing that in the offset. Uh we do have some big ticket items coming up. We just got the low bid back for the utility relocation at Commerce Lakes Drive and Gateway Drive. The initial estimate provided was just a little north of five hundred thousand dollars, the low bid is seven hundred and thirty two thousand dollars. So when you add in the engineering, design and construction supervision, we'll be pushing nine hundred thousand dollars on that project. And that doesn't toe well, because it could mean that the relocation cost at Griffin Drive could probably approach one point two million dollars. And unless we dip into reserves, uh which we would rather not, those costs are going to be added to the utility bill starting October and we'll be bringing a rate case to the board in August. But it's not a significant increase to the bill, because we do it over time, so you're probably looking at about five dollars a month. But there will be an increase related to that to cover those costs. And also, if we add any debt service to costs related to capital improvements on the utility side, that adds some additional cost to that by monthly bill.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Members of the board, we have a resolution twenty twenty dash ten, if you'll find on your agenda page one hundred and forty two that we need to uh pass this evening. Uh but before I call for motion and second, I'd like to, uh, Mrs. Flaherty, do you have any statements or comments or questions to like to ask?
Well, I do have some comments and a couple of questions. On page, agenda page one ten, can we go to page one ten? Okay, and Mr. Shoemaker, could you explain late maintenance, why it went up from one seventy five to three hundred? And also, um the basic cleaning from two fifty to four hundred?
Sure, the maintenance for the ponds. What page, I'm sorry?
We're on page one ten, it's underwaterway management services, oh halfway down, it's under the fountain maintenance that we don't have.
Under waterway maintenance. And I'll tell you what we did with that, is we looked at what's upcoming with the pond standards. It's still.
So, well, it's my agenda page, one ten, it's the budget page eight, if that'll help.
Go to one oh seven, I think is where that. Management services. Yeah, and the existing contract was one hundred and seventy five thousand dollars of aquagenics. There was an additional one hundred and twenty five thousand put in the budget for littoral maintenance in excess of D O. So we added that one hundred and twenty five thousand to that amount, because we anticipate with the new pond standards there's going to be a higher level of service in the community. In some sections of the community where those littorals have grown to a twenty five foot width, the development order specifies they be from eight to ten feet. We had an estimate recently, just to go into one subdivision, to bring those littorals back to the development order, and the low bid was sixty four thousand dollars. And you see that at the next bid. And the last time, in twenty eighteen, when the board renewed their maintenance contract for the ponds, the low bidder was a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. The second bidder came in at three hundred and eighty three thousand dollars, it kind of shocked the board, and they asked the contractor, why is your bid so high? And his response was, because that's what it takes to do the job right. And he was looking at maintenance of those littorals and enhanced. So what we're looking at is a level of service, and that's going to be set when the pond standards, we have that public hearing, I mean, excuse me, workshop coming up July second. Within the next six to eight weeks after that, the new pond standards will be adopted. They will dictate the level of service and what the expectations are in the community. And we're anticipating that we'll take every bit of that three hundred thousand dollars, if not more.
But, Mr. Flaherty?
And the catch basin cleaning also went up, and that's directly related to enhanced work in the stormwater system. And one thing we're finding out, we're going in now, which previously hadn't done, the board had been putting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in for storm drain cleaning. We've been moving throughout the community, cleaning those drains, especially in subdivisions where the blockage was in excess of forty percent. And what we're finding is um we have some compromised pipes and compromised structures, where we went to plug them and clean them out. They just continue to fill with groundwater. And the pipes are breached or the structures are breached. And we're doing three of those repairs right now, and three repairs on those pipes, approximately twenty four thousand dollars. And if you don't fix them, the water will continue. And one of these pipes, it is, runs between two homes, and you're actually getting, it's the water filters, and it's taking the dirt with it and getting subsidence in the soil between the homes, so it really isn't an option not to fix it. And that goes back to that, talking about exposure, um these are things that we really don't have a choice.
My next comment is that even without the new methodology, the budget was set at, the increase was over ten percent. That just is, I, I can't see the residents even accepting that increase, because they've been out of work. And even the businesses that are here have been not working, and they need to replenish their finances. And those people who have to work, you know, need to replenish their finances, they've just, you know, it's just, I, I think that, you know, how you're looking at it, any increase that's a double digit is just too much for the residents of the great, just at this point in time.
Yeah, if it looks big, it's ten percent, ten percent's ten percent, but it's five dollars a month. And there will be opportunities next month to further reduce that.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Mr. Banks?
Yeah, uh I'm assuming that when staff got together, uh you didn't have a dark lord, that you were throwing numbers to come up with two point nine million dollars. It's where you.
Their actual costs and so, and I applaud you for getting together and doing that.
I'm certainly not going to suggest bringing that in, that needs to be considered, that's going to, over the next four, five, six, eight years. My concern's right now, one, are the funds that were set aside for uh pay escalation, are they still in running?
They are still in, but we did not pull those out, that could be an area for discussion.
That's, that's issue one. Issue two, the three hundred thousand dollars, if you feel like you're out on a limb on this one.
And, and I'm sorry, what was, what was the last thing you said about the budget? I couldn't hear, what was, what was that item?
I just asked if the salary adjustments uh allowance was still in the budget and it was permanent.
Okay, thank you.
The next one I've got is, is that with your knowledge of what is in the proposed revised pond standard, we're going to talk about next three.
No.
Two weeks, two weeks. Three hundred thousand dollars. That number scares me to death.
Well, what our plans are, is once the board adopts the new pond standards, we're going to take that contract and put it out to bid. And that's where we are money-wise. Um if you want to ask me right now off the top, I think you're going to be about seventy five, two hundred thousand dollars short. I am looking at some other sources of revenue to bring in.
I'd buy that right now. I, I don't like, that's the way Washington does stuff. I would like to do a little bit different. After we have that pond standard, and we have what we feel to be a approval standard, before we vote, I'd like to have one, two, maybe three. Give us a preliminary cost, I'm afraid that the three hundred thousand could be as high as five hundred thousand. The last thing I want to do is to approve a set pond standard we can't afford. I think before we pass another standard, we know what it's going to cost us. And it doesn't hurt us, because in that month of, between when we review it, approve it, or review it and be ready to approve it, we can go another month and get pricing in two or three bidders to justify that that price is active, that concern going on. You've got budgeted in here, this morning walking the dog, I saw a lady, I hope there's no attorneys around, lady in front of me tripped and fell over one of our sidewalks up on, where we woke up. Uh, no, no injury, scared the bejesus out of her, but the mulch in the landscaping had come down and washed out with all the rings from pet and the, what's called the irrigation, camouflaged, but was a lay bump up like that with concrete caused by a tree root. My question is, I just don't see a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is going to fix all of our sidewalk problems. What is the number we need actually to finish what staff has looked at in the way of sidewalk repair? To me, that is a dangerous item.
I can throw a number up, but I'd rather ask Brian for sure, our public works manager, to come up, because we put together that five-year plan that we initially brought out, I'd like him to comment on that number. But so far this year, we've gone over in front of skinny dogs, we were working there, and also in front of the elementary school um that was corrupt, and we did have a bike fall accident over there, so those.
My question is, is that as soon as we go up and we fix one segment of the sidewalks, someone will follow another segment that we left out. Ryan, what are we looking at as a total cost we really need to put in to fix our site?
Your first assessment that I did, and I figured out the cost, not exactly what we were talking, that was ninety two thousand dollars to fix that section. My goal was to get rid of all your concrete, not inside of Stony Brook, but out here on the trails and everywhere else, good asphalt. Oak trees are staying, aware, the only way to fix that is you get rid of the concrete, the laptop, you get the humps, and you get the launches like you would for a bicycle or like the lady that hit it. I'm looking at about three hundred thousand a year for five years, and you need to put them on a five-year rotation unless you can get rid of the oak trees. The only sections that you don't have to worry about is down, the other side of Stony Brook, where you don't have the oak trees, that's plain, you can ride through there all day long. But if you want to hit the areas where all the oak trees are done, Gateway Boulevard and over on Commerce, all that. First six bids I got back, it totaled almost three hundred thousand dollars. We took care of two of them, the skinny dogs, and I did one in front of the school, because that was bad, I didn't want kids getting hurt over there.
Like cutting it back from three hundred thousand to one hundred and fifty thousand, we took a five-year plan to bait it to ten.
Yes, sir.
But, but Ryan, if you flag that location, Mr. Pink will provide.
We don't want to flag, you flag it, then you notify, then you're aware of it.
We have to do that.
Well, I was at the city, I was told not to do that, because if you do that, then you're just like, I see their flag before they've been spray painted. And we can do that, and my guys will be a week doing it, and we'll be doing it every other week, redoing that.
Yeah, before the law, the two things you need to do, one of the, you fix it, or, and before you fix it, make the public aware of it. Okay? That's what, that, you know, otherwise you have a known hazard that may be hit to the public.
Well, I ride my bike there at night sometimes, I don't care what you do, you ain't going to see it at night. You come through special, like Gateway Greens.
Some places put signs up next to it, probably do that.
We can do that.
Wouldn't have enough signs.
Yeah, it's, it's bad. The next one is, is right, oh, Brian of the city, you can go back.
Okay.
I didn't see anywhere in the budget that we have money allocated, I didn't even bring this one up. Gateway Boulevard is getting really bad in three days. That road is pumping up badly because of the trees. Uh, I, I cannot believe that the police have not notified us. But my question is, I don't see anywhere in the budget that we have budgeted funds to fix those three pop-ups. to fix those three pop-ups that are on Gateway Boulevard in the vicinity of the...
Out of the $300,000 I was allocating, probably half of that to the roads. Technically, if you want to do roads as well, you're probably talking $200,000, $300,000 a year as well. We're getting ready to start Monday on the area, on Commerce, on the where, right by the old Royal Greens and Villas, you know, except that puddle in pond, it's been there since I've lived here for 20 years. That's being addressed because your valley gutters popped up because of the tree roots.
So what you're saying is that we did this correctly?
You need about $300,000 as well.
Of each?
Yes.
$600,000 a year for the next five years?
One lake.
I'm sorry?
One lake. One lake.
A one lake?
But no, you would need about for the next five years. The oak trees are what's doing it, we all know that. If we're going to leave them or I can take them out, this is going to be continuous, going around, keep fixing. I'm aware that counties not slap us harder because you do have areas where the valley gutters now are not flowing the way they're supposed to, if your water is puddling in areas that shouldn't. Those need to be addressed and fixed. I think county fixed a couple of them, I noticed, for us, probably last year, year before that. We didn't do it. County did. I don't think that we can keep doing that over time. Because your road is buffling up where those tree roots are at as well.
I think that one... Yeah. Before we go, again, Mr. Tinkler, will you remind me why we're responsible for pumps on Gateway Boulevard? I thought when we turned over Gateway and Griffin to the county, that we took over, that they took over all of the expenses that we, having, and we were going to save this huge amount of money.
Fairly simple is, look at that agreement in detail, Gateway still kept responsibility for the sidewalks, the trails, and the landscaping. The landscaping is the source of the breach. So our only choice would be remove the oak trees or continue to repair the pavement. And it's a problem, it's only going to be more endemic to the whole system out there on the road, getting expensive.
That was the discussion at the contract level with the county, exactly the issue.
The county was, they didn't want to have those trees in Gateway Boulevard for a number of reasons. They said they didn't meet standards, which is why it's all those kind of, but they said we would make an exception for this roadway segment, Gateway Boulevard, all the oak trees, if the district agreed to maintain those trees in such a fashion, that if there were any encroachment or any areas that was potentially liability, the county called us out on it, we would fix it and indemnify the county's commission funds. The county's position was, those don't meet our standards and we need to take them out. So we got rid of the ownership, we did get rid of the liability?
Not all of it. Not all of it.
And Tony, just to, just for clarification on that, are you saying if, and I'm not talking about the sidewalks, I'm talking about road, road issues. So if there's a road issue due to root encroachment or something due to landscaping, the trees, what are we on the hook for? Is it just remediating landscaping or are we also on the hook for the road repair?
Both. Both. Actually, what you did...
Well, I have to look at the green as far as the road repair, but definitely have to do that. Take care of the encroaching roots, whether it's root barriers, which...
What the plan is on Commerce is we want to take the valley gutter out, basically shade that oak tree back where the roots are at, put a root barrier in, put the valley gutter back in. I've not got money to fix the road because I know that's going to be part of the roundabout. So I didn't want to get into that until they're done. If we have to, we will, but basically we're going to fix the valley gutter and turn the roots back. So that way you don't have that hump in the water, can't float back in the storm system like it's supposed to. Because that amount of water staying there constantly is just going to keep deteriorating.
But just so I'm clear, if, if something happens, if the root encroaches on the road, damages the road, we have to fix the road?
That's what I understand.
And Brian, real quick, you talked about sidewalk replacement of the materials. I'm just curious, do you have an estimate, again hypothetically, of what it would cost to remove the trees that we deem have a potential risk or some type of future liability due to growth encroachment?
I do know we did an assessment just for streetlights and there's 45 oak trees that should be removed and that bid was over $100,000, roughly about $2,000 a tree and that was a good price. So I know I had mine priced, my own house was about $2,500, they were giving us a deal. But just for the streetlights and Mr. Tinkler was in question about a month ago, I had Glenn do assessment. We, I don't know if you wear, put green flagging around them, there's 45 of them, that was $100,000. I guarantee you'd have to remove more than that, but you're talking a lot of those.
So in theory, Brian, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I know Ed, it's still, still your floor. Would, would that negate the material replacement from concrete asphalt?
If you took the tree roots out or close to the road impeding the valley gutters and the blacktop, we'd have to do an assessment of all those. I can get you a number, probably you'd take a week to get it all. Because I'd have to have our same person come out as we did with the ones for the streetlights. Once you got those trees removed, it would, and the county approved it, it would probably get you out of being liable for the road, I would think. I'm not 100% sure.
Because there's nothing more to improve.
Correct.
And what I'm getting to here, so at some point, we're going to have to do a cost benefit analysis of, you know, when, risk versus liability versus cost to maintain versus repair and replace, that's where we're going to ultimately have to get to. And we've been skirting this conversation, or at least it's been brought up several times, but I think we've kind of said, well, let's wait till it does become critical. And I think we're getting close to needing to make a critical decision, which is not going to be popular because you're, when you talk about tearing trees down, you know, there's going to be a divide in that. But if you want to keep the trees, there's a cost to...
That's part B of that. You're going to have to add in the landscaping to replace what you just tore out.
Yeah, yeah. So, but again, if, if, if you're in favor of something and the community supports, let's say if you have overwhelming support for, for trees, then we also have to assume the cost to maintain. So you can't have it, you can't have it both ways, which is unfortunately the truth.
Mr. Banks, are you...
Sorry, I didn't mean to hijack you.
Mr. Banks, are you finished with your discussion on the budget?
I have two, two other questions, but I want to make sure Ed got his done because I jumped in on them.
Mr. Tinkler, please, please go ahead.
So when we look at the increases to the, the current assessment based on the things that we feel like we, we need to get done, and Chris, again, I do applaud the staff from almost cutting the original numbers in half, probably even more than that. I think we are still at a position where we may have to look at offsetting, offsetting some projects to continue to reduce the assessment. I mean, I think, I think we'd all love to be under 10%, so we stay in single digits. In order to do that, you're talking about a 50% cut. And if we're using that, what, 2.8 or whatever that number was, you're looking at about 1.4. There's only a couple of ways to do that. One, you remove things out of the budget. So we've gone from nice to have to maybe must have, I don't know if that's where you'd say you're at right now. But the, so one way, again, is just to, is to make additional cuts. Another way is to offset some of the existing. So my question is, Stephen, normally we have significant spillover from budget year to budget year. What do we anticipate? And again, I don't know if you're in a position to say this right now, but I think last year, what was it, like 340 or 400 or spillover from last year?
Yeah, Mr. Banks, when you were saying last year, you're talking fiscal year 2019?
That's correct.
Yeah, no, it was much more than 400,000. But yeah, I know what you're saying, there, there is the spillover.
Yeah, so maybe it was 550, I don't know, I can't remember. But what, do, do you have any idea, even if this is all part of this point, what are potential spillovers going to be for this year?
No, not for this year, I don't know that yet.
So in order to offset, there, there's two, a couple of options, I mean, that I can think of off the top of my head. And one, it would be, you know, to fund some of these through reserves. And I think, I think majority of the board, you know, believes you don't want to, you don't want to dilute that down to a very small amount, but there may be some excess there. And then two, would also look to, you know, leverage, you know, spillover for potential future funding. So one of the things that we could do in order to get down to a 9% is to defer some projects. So when I'm looking at that, I would say the first cut that I would make is looking at, looking at the additional expenditures and say, which one of these are, are high priorities? And that priority would be based on anything that is either has risk or liability associated to it. So as an example, you know, Brian, some of the, the things that you're saying around sidewalks, you know, that does pose a risk and liability, so that, that could be deemed as a high priority versus, you know, something else that's more of a repair and replace that adds, you know, maybe an improvement opportunity. So I think we could look at anything that is high based on a risk and liability, put that in the budget. And then if there are projects that are, you know, let's say medium to high, that really need to get done, but could possibly defer and be funded through alternative channels, I think that is an opportunity. Now, what we're kind of doing is just a little bit of sleight of hand, I think, because I do think when I'm listening to Chris, you talk, and even Ed, some of the things that you brought up, I think we've under budgeted some items that will probably be higher, that will end up maybe being must, must dos or must have. So I think what we need to do is get really creative on how we can reduce the budget to under, into single digits. And I, and I voted for the assessment. So 9% of this increase I'm directly responsible for. So that's why I am passionate about, you know, trying to reduce it. So I think we just all need to get really creative and see how we can get the budget down to 9%, but also get done what we absolutely need to, and then leave the door open for additional funding sources through deferred projects. That's it.
Mr. Banks?
Yes, I, I, the increase does concern me. And I do worry about the people in the community that are going to be greatly affected by this increase. So I really want us to, I know we're setting the high watermark today, but I think I agree with Mr. Banks, we need to get creative and we need to sharpen our pencils and we need to look at the budget and say, we can put this off or we don't need this right now. And I just think we really need to reduce this budget. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Tinkler. Mr. Tinkler, you have one more?
Yeah, I have one more. Stephen, you on the line? Stephen?
Yes, yes, sir, I'm here.
I'm looking at the page of fiscal year 2021, operating budget, general fund 001. What, can you give us the page number? Well, it's page nine on my budget self. What it is, is it's the capital reserve calculation. We have budgeted into this budget, reserve dash capital program, $290,462. I can't find anything in the budget that shows how that number was generated. Can you show me what page or tell me what page to look at in the attachments that justifies that number?
Yeah, there's two pieces to it, one's a little simpler than the other. The, the main piece of it is just a, a dollar amount for future projects, kind of based on what we have put into the capital reserve each year and kind of...
What is that calculation?
I'm sorry, there, there is no calculation, you just look at the capital reserve, the five-year plan. It's, it's really just kind of based off of the five-year plan, trying to start to put enough away for it. So, so basically, your five-year plan is, is what, about a little bit over a half a million dollars. So that's kind of where it's built on. And this is just a five-year plan with heavy loaded on the 2021. So it really is just trying to put a certain amount away based on this five-year plan. And then the rest of it is just kind of to balance the budget, that's why it's got change and stuff and it's not a, a flat number.
If we had a true capital reserve study, would this not be the place where that map would show up?
Yes, I mean, this is where, I mean, that would be the funding mechanism to tie into that reserve study. This plan that you have in front of you, though, is created by staff as they kind of look through and, and study the infrastructure themselves. But yes, if, if you wanted to go that route, you could get a reserve study that would, you know, kind of basically do the same thing.
Follow my thinking. I'm not saying I would go with this, but I want you to make sure I understand the map. This page 135 shows a anticipated, and I'm assuming this is 001 account?
That's correct.
Yeah. It's $522,000 is the estimated cost over five years, that's $100,000 per year, and we're putting in $290,000 a year. It appears to be that we're overfunding the capital improvement fund, the reserve, by almost double. Is there something else that I'm missing?
Yes, the, the, I think the piece that you're missing is that after the initial budget that was released, staff went and started cutting, you know? So there are probably projects that in a previous scenario, or in a perfect world, that would go back in there, that they might feel in coming years, you know, once we get past this, that they're going to have to put it back in. So I, that's, that's why the number is...
Capital and operating like that. In other words, if we've got $290,000 in here budgeted, which is 190,000 more than we need, that's telling me that 190,000 could be spent, but it would have to be spent on capital?
It, well, several, several options. Again, you have the option to defer some of that, that amount that's budgeted this year and say, we're going to reduce it this year and we will put it, it back into the budget next year. Yes, you do have the option to reduce that capital reserve and off, you know, try and offset some of the operating costs that's in your current budget.
If you can do this and not be handcuffed. And if we have the ability, this might be a place to where, if we were going to try to do some saving, maybe this is a place where you do it. But I'd want to hear from staff that somebody did this with some reason. What's the reason? That's my question.
I'll answer that briefly. The projected 2020, a lot of those items were included in those future years, but with the budget pressures, I went in and gutted that 2021 and those other years, as you see, it's 20,000 in '22 and it's more a $50,000 average. We had $300,000 in the parks and recreation for oak grades, we took that out, we reduced it across the board in all those categories. And I'll make a couple of quick points too on that. Say approximately $400,000 to carry forward for this year, board allocated $100,000 for additional storm drain cleaning. They allocated $78,000 for the first year of the wear study. And $30,000 for the engineering study in Magnolia Lake. So that half of it went into projects, and I think there was one or two more, I just can't think of, that we used about a quarter of a million of that dollars. And right now, I know in the projected 2020, it shows waterway management for aerators, $30,000. And we use that money to pay for the structure in Magnolia Lakes because it was the closest thing we had in the budget that was in waterway management to that because it wasn't funded. So that money's been expended.
But my whole thing on all of this is that the 290 is factual, then it's okay. But if it is a estimate, I just want to make sure that we're not, have our hands tied on this capital operating issue that has come up.
No, and right now, when you see under the projected 2020, basically all that money's been expended with the exception of the irrigation zones. You know, we did the, used the irrigation money. We did the bocce ball courts. We expended the money out of the soccer field for LED lights mostly and tried to forego the balance boxes. We switched it to save energy on LEDs and smaller boxes. And that $3,000 next year will complete a, will complete the lighting replacement on all the soccer fields with LED lights at about a 40 to 60% energy savings. And we also did have in the capital, $24,500 for reserve study that was pulled out also.
Mrs. Flaherty, it's Bush.
Yes, the bocce ball courts. Are we getting that money back to us?
Yes, and we have gotten that money back.
Okay, just double checking.
Anything else, anything else?
No.
All right, we have a resolution on page 142 of my agenda labeled Resolution 2020-10. To approve budget for fiscal year, fiscal year 21. Setting a public hearing there on, for short, to quote the law, reference middle approach and publication requirements to justice of ability and providing the best state. I'm not going to read the whole darn thing. The important part is, we're going to have a public hearing on August the 20th at 6:00 PM with this. Now, do you have something that you needed to add to that? Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve this resolution, 2020-10? I'll leave that.
Don't move.
And Mrs. Feinberg, seconded, is there any further compensation we need before we vote on this resolution?
No.
Mr. Tinkle, may I have your vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Banks?
Aye.
Mrs. Flaherty?
No.
Mr. Guy? Yes. Motion carried for one. And in recognition that the proposal you all have as the code assessments, the utilization of that revised. Thank you. All right. I think we've done it all to, to revise the comments to item six. Mrs. Flaherty, do you have any further comments?
I'd like to make a personal comment. I'd just like to thank Gateway for their sympathy card that they sent me. Thank you.
Mr. Tinkle, do you have any further supervisor comments?
Just to, we received information back from Board of Department of Transportation relative to the I-75 crossing. I thought the response on their part was immensely lacking, to the, to, to the point of almost a joke. I talked to the senior guy up there and he suggested talking to Mr. Figaroa, who wrote the letter. I left him a message for the S and P back. I drafted a letter, talked to Tony, and Tony suggested that I get the letter to Chris, have Chris look at it, and that we bring it to the meeting next, next week and have it signed off as a letter from the entire board to the state of Florida Department of Transportation indicating our serious, serious concerns about the undersizing of the pipe that goes under, twin colors that go under I-75. His disposition was, this cavalier attitude, our highway's high and dry. What, what, our highway's high and dry? Hell, yes, it's high and dry, it's 12 feet higher than any house. I ain't worrying about that highway. It's, it's the whole west end of Pelican Reserve that's underwater. So, I mean, the guy didn't even understand what we're talking about. And what's surprising about it, he's an engineer, he didn't want to. There's the deal. My thing is, is that I want to ask for, and I see no reason why we can't demand a meeting down here with them and very possibly our state legislative people and saying, we got a problem here, people, we got a big problem. And it's, Irma was a wake-up call. Irma was a wake-up call. Irma didn't even meet the criteria of 37 CFS per square mile. It was close, but it wasn't that. Which means if we would get more water like we could and should get, that bridge, that, those twin colors are going to be a restriction. It's just sort of water, it's a backwater curve. It's going to come right back through tree line because tree line's opening is double the size of the interstate opening, which how in the heck that ever got approved is beyond.
Tree line goes underwater every, every time there's a rain of any significance.
I understand, it has the capability, it's setting double the amount of water that I-75 allows to go across. So what happens is it starts going back. The first place that it goes back is Bob knows, see, and I drove his car, not mine, down through the, the bottoms of Pelican Reserve. And I'm telling you, it was scary. And when we start getting in this other stuff, especially Kipper Freecare right next door that's now going through, not counting any more water that comes off of tree line itself, service runoff. We're going to have just that much more that's going to cause that water to back up, get problems. My deal is, it seems to me that it can be simply, very simply handled by pouring another pipe adjacent to it. He acts like I'm taking money out of his pocket. We'll try that first, but if that doesn't work, we'll see what other pockets there are. But we need a meeting. The last thing I want to do is to sit here and push this down the road to where somebody like that in this position is basically, it's done because I said it's done. Well.
You don't want to say more.
Tough luck, we're going to put more pipe. My suggestion is I'll send the letter that I drafted over to Chris, let him massage it. I don't think there's anything wrong with it. And we have it brought before the board at the next meeting. That's issue one. Second issue is we sent the letter to the county. Has anybody heard anything?
I think I've heard that staff was going to have a meeting with a couple of board members to discuss it.
Couple of the county commissioners.
County commissioners?
Yes, sir. And Mr. Tinkle?
Step in the right direction.
If I may, may I add a comment to your, your address to the Board of County Commissioners is probably the same tack you should take with the DOT except for send a copy of that letter and ask them to help the legislative delegation and get a line item appropriation for a study to be done in the DOT budget. Then once it's in their budget, they don't have a whole lot to say about it. And it might be a multi-year process to get it funded and constructed, but once you get that feasibility study underway, we'll get in their five-year plan.
My, my letter is not so long that you couldn't add that as a paragraph.
Thank you. Mr. Feinberg, you have any supervisor comments?
I do not.
Mr. Banks, you have any supervisor comments?
Yeah, I mean, just quickly, I, I, as we're going through. Did you hear me? Yeah.
I didn't understand.
So as we're going through budget discussions, I think this board has historically done a really good job of either keeping the budget flat or operating with, with minimal increases. So even though the budget's at 19% increase in some areas today, I feel confident that when we go to final budget, that we'll be in a good place. And I'm individually very sensitive of what we're going through. And, and I know personally I've taken a, taken a pretty, a, a, a pretty substantial, you know, voluntary pay cut in, in my world and deferred 2019 bonus payout so I can maintain the 50-person team that I have with minimal reduction. So I'm very sensitive to, to the current environment. So that's just something that, you know, I, I wanted to, to state as I voted for the assessment increase. And then in addition, I, I think it, you know, there's still things we have to get done. So we're going to work through this and, and identify critical items and, and cut what we can cut. But this is just part of, you know, government and leadership type roles. So that's it for me.
Thank you. I want to thank the supervisors, the staff, the audience and everyone else who helped us get through very difficult items. And without objection, we are adjourned at 4:40 PM. Thank you, Bill.